It's much more mysterious.
Next time.
Do maps, huh?
Alright, so.
Like to welcome everybody to the May 10th Seneca County Border Supervisors Meeting. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Supervisor Reynolds.
Here.
Supervisor Andrew Trout.
Here.
Supervisor Ronell.
Here.
Supervisor Barnhart.
Here.
Supervisor Borst.
Here.
Supervisor Hayes.
Here.
Supervisor Ferrara.
Here.
Supervisor Croninwetter.
Here.
Supervisor Reinhardt.
Here.
Supervisor Partee.
Here.
Supervisor Heisen. Supervisor Don Trout.
Here.
Supervisor Enzlo.
Here.
Supervisor Shipley.
He's here.
You have a call, Mr. Enzlo.
Thank you. Would everybody please stand for a pledge allegiance and a moment of silence?
And to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Alright.
Okay, we have no public hearings tonight. We do have two presentations. Seneca Lake Sanitary Sewer Project, the MRB Group.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, thank you. My name is Matt Horn, I'm the Director of Local Government Services for MRB Group, joined by Pat Nicoletta, who is Senior Project Manager for MRB. The work is trying not to talk to everyone back if we can't. But apologize if everybody can't see, see the boards. So we're excited to be working with, with the Town of Fayette on a critical infrastructure project along the eastern shore of Seneca Lake. Virtually every one of you has, has a water or sewer project going in your own town. Those of you who are, who are fortunate to have, to have this type of infrastructure. You know, if you, if you look at, at the needs of the county, we know that infrastru-, we know inherently that infrastructure is what drives growth. That a lot of the market capacity that Seneca County has not realized yet is as a result of simply just an absence of some critical baseline infrastructure. The state of New York has dozens and dozens and dozens of funding sources out there, a lot of them targeted specifically at infrastructure. What you have to be able to demonstrate to the state of New York is, since, as you would expect, as in your budgets, the need outstrips the resources every time. For us to just walk in there and present an infrastructure project would be, would be putting us in a class with a whole lot of other really deserving counties and towns who are also facing infrastructure deficits. So, we were excited yesterday to be able to convene some decision makers and representatives from New York State to talk to them about an often overlooked angle to infrastructure projects, particularly in rural communities. Pat and I work a lot in rural communities, including some of your own towns and villages. And, and what we know is that the infrastructure needs of larger cities and the infrastructure needs of rural communities are very similar, and they both have similar ramifications. So in this very tiny lettering here that none of you are able to read, you'll see, this chart generally represents the New York State Economic Development Strategy. And out here in the green, on the right side of this strategy, is placemaking. New York State recognizes that a big chunk of our economy relies upon attracting residents. Workforce drives industry. Workforce drives every sector of our economy. So we need to attract residents, and we need to attract visitors. Because those are my favorite types of, of folks traveling through the Finger Lakes. We pick their pockets, and we send them back to demand services in their hometowns. And so for us to continue to be a vibrant economic engine in Seneca County, particularly around tourism, and to develop the workforce we need, we're gonna have to be able to focus on placemaking. That's perfect alignment with the state's economic development strategy. To go a step farther, the Finger Lakes Regional Economic Development Council has established this economic development framework. And for those of you who've looked at grant applications, they, they, one of the things that the state of New York will not do is fund a one-off initiative. Every, every community that has a sewer district needs money, alright? Every community that wants a sewer district, needs money to create a sewer district. And so again, we're just gonna, we're gonna end up standing out, and we're not gonna end up standing out in the crowd if we just go in and say, "We need money for a sewer district." So, we looked critically at the Finger Lakes Regional Economic Development Framework, and along the bottom here, they kinda treat this like a house. Along the bottom, at the foundation of the house, they identify quality of life, cost of living, connectivity, tourism, and infrastructure. We believe that these types of projects represent all of those things. Residents that we want to attract to the region demand municipal water and sewer, in a lot of cases. Any type of affordable housing initiative is gonna require density, which is gonna require municipal water and sewer. And certainly any kind of industry. We got to listen yesterday to some really poignant stories from Dave Mansfield, who is a principal at Three Brothers Winery. Dave's property alone attracts 200,000 visitors every year, the Seneca County. On Saturday afternoons, in season, about 3 o'clock in the afternoon, Dave closes the gates and tells incoming traffic, "You gotta go." The reason for that is because Dave's sewer system, his septic system, which he invested $2 million to build, and estimates $300,000 annually in maintenance, cannot support any additional travelers to the site. Those folks are getting in their cars and leaving Seneca County, taking their precious sales tax dollars with them. So we know for certain that infrastructure is a critical bottleneck in, in this case, and probably in a lot of cases. Good news, we also fall in alignment with a, a significant pillar of the region's economic development strategy, which is agriculture and food production. Seneca County is right in the cradle of that. Significant agricultural production, wine, agritourism, it's all happening right here. But it cannot grow, it cannot get bigger, it cannot serve the current market demand without investments in infrastructure. We have to make this case to the Finger Lakes Regional Economic Development Council, because they are, they hold the keys. They evaluate every grant application that comes across, and they make a determination as to whether you receive critical regional council scoring. So, we were able to present to the state this map of the Town of Fayette, and, and to identify, just along this proposed project, all of the tourism assets that are at play. Places like Zuggie Winery, Three Brothers Winery, Bottomless Brewing, Ventosa Vineyards, Seneca Yacht Club, Stivers Marina, Seneca Lake Resorts, and Barret Marine. All major contributors to a tourism economy, to an agriculture economy, and all of them have said, "We cannot grow, we can't even sustain our current operation without infrastructure." So what we're working to do is to demonstrate to the state that we're in alignment with the state's economic development strategy. We're creating jobs in Fayette and in Seneca County. We're creating jobs in agriculture and tourism. We're protecting the Seneca Lake watershed. Along the proposed 11-mile route, there are 233 residential septic systems, eight commercial septic systems, 52,000 gallons per day of, of limited treatment for wa-, for water right along Seneca Lake. That amounts to about 20 million gallons of, gallons a year of limited treatment, which continues to challenge the health of Seneca Lake. This board and, and your, and your peer communities have adopted regulations that are gonna tighten the restrictions, that are gonna require additional investment in septic to continue to protect the health of the lake, as you should. That's a critical piece of our economic development strategy. Projects like this will enable, will enable folks to, A, get better treatment of water and wastewater, and B, stop investing in, in this limited treatment method. So, Pat is gonna talk for a moment about the, the project specifically.
Okay, this is, I give an overview of the project that we have proposed. This over here is the Town of Fayette, Town of Barret Line. And we are running a trunk line basically along the lake to pick up all of Lake residents. So this trunk line continues among, across these households, among private drives. And we'll run along the railroad and continue further heading north. Basically down to here, and then there, Edward basically continues all the way along to Booty's Hill. And then heads up River Road. And then we'll tie, continue on River Road, basically, and tie into the village system. The Village Waterloo wastewater system. So, in addition to that, this is all, this is all low-pressure sewer and conventional sewer. So low-pressure sewer means that basically, it's a force main that we install. The grinder's pumps are associated with each resident, and those grinder pumps push up to that force main. That force main will take it to a conventional pump station. Ultimately, right around Booty's Hill area, that's where we make the switch to a conventional pump station. And that will be continuing into the Village Waterloo. That system is approximately, well, let me go back to talk about the spurs in these areas, and Matt mentioned some of the developments that are along this area. Basically, this is Zuggie Wineries right here, this is Three Brothers. So off the main trunk line, you basically run spurs to pick up those properties. There's also some residential properties, but they are picking up the bigger, uh, bigger wineries in that area. Along the trunk line, you pick up another spur, it's basically here, along Edward Drive, that picks up the brewery, that's on East Lake Road, 96A. And also Ventola is up through here, Stivers Marina is in this area, Barret's Marine is over here, so we pick up the major industries in this, in this development. So, we have a part, as Matt mentioned, there's just over 11 miles of sanitary sewer installed, which includes any force main sizes from 2 to 8 inches. Basically, we need lower, lower size sewer to reduce flow on the south side of the development, and we continue further heading north, the sewer size force mains will get larger as they go. The project costs, including contingency and soft costs, is estimated around $7.3 million. So it's a big undertaking for the project. That would be at 4% a year. You're looking at for 40 years, and around $1,100 per EDU per resident. An EDU is an equivalent dwelling unit. Basically, one single household would be one unit, at 54,000 gallons per day, 54,000 gallons per year. And then, with that being considered, we have around 350, 360 EDUs. The capital cost alone is $1,100 per, per unit. In addition to that $1,100 per unit, you have maintenance, operation maintenance, which is another $150 on top of that. And then on top of that, you have your commodity charge. So, all in, they basically, for the capital cost and the commodity charge, and a typical resident household, right now, would pay basically around $1,800 per year. Now that's, that does not include grant money, and that's why we are pursuing funding from the state agencies, as Matt mentioned. And that's, it's a great project, great infrastructure project, brings a lot of potential growth to this area, and expansion of wineries, or expansion of businesses there, there, which would be a great project to see happen in Seneca County.
We use Three Brothers as kind of a hallmark. It's certainly the larger of these projects. Three Brothers indicated, with sewer like this, they could, they could potentially expand their winemaking operation five times. They could use the space where they've got their existing leach field to create new wine cellars, new production equipment, and, and to generate additional jobs. A great, a great stat that came out of, out of one of the other wineries who was, who was with us at Zuggie, effectively talked about, you know, for, for every bottle of wine sold, there are, it's over $10 in tax generated to, to local and state government. So, we're talking about, again, missing out on that additional production opportunity because of, because of limited, you know, limited production capability. We've got all the hallmarks of a great economic development project. We're creating jobs. We are enabling a, a stronger quality of life, and we have strong local government partnerships. This project, as progressive as the Town of Fayette has been, cannot pursue without partnership with Waterloo. The state's view of this project is further, is made further attractive by, you know, the county considering support in, in your, in your ARPA allocation. So, the more partners these guys sign on, private sector and local government, the better off they'll be, and as Pat said, it's a, it's a fantastic infrastructure project.
Does the, I can probably ask, Don, does the wastewater treatment plant in Waterloo have the capacity?
Yes. Yeah, we, we've, we've had, every meeting we have is with the village to make sure that that's, yeah. Go ahead.
The, the northern section there, does that have the ability to go over towards Seneca Lake Park for future?
Yes, I mean, that's one thing I didn't think, Don, to bring that up. So basically, this is, right near Booty's Hill, basically, we have Seneca Lake Park. And Seneca Lake Park, the Parks Department has been very interested in getting sewers to this area.
For a lot of years.
The other one is possibly, another developer is looking at also developing cabins and marinas. So I, I'm sorry I didn't bring that up, but this, basically, Seneca Lake Park is another, another player. We will bring lateral across the channel and tie into our trunk line, basically.
And to that point, the, the Finger Lakes Regional Representative from State Parks and the Sessler Companies are represented in these conversations as well.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Thanks to all of you for considering.
Thank you.
Alright, our second presentation tonight is Seneca County Tourism Promotion Agency Report. Jeff Shipley, Project Director.
Okay, thank you. And while they're setting the screen up, I do have a, a screen presentation for you. But I just wanna say, what a, what a setup. Thank you to MRB. That was a great setup going into tourism. I'm reminded of a quote, I did not say it. I think it's attributed to the Director of the Dallas-Fort Worth Convention and Visitor Bureau. She said, "If you build a place that people want to visit, you build a place that people want to live. If you build a place that people want to live, you'll build a place that people want to work in. And if you build a place that people want to work in, you'll build a place that business has to be." So I think it's a great setup to what MRB just, just presented for you, and I applaud the, I applaud the foresight. Oh, do I, just the power button? So for, as we're getting this started, for the newer supervisors, greetings. My name is Jeff Shipley, I think all of you know me. I am the President and CEO of the Chamber of Commerce. We are the county's tourism promotion agency by contract. I come before you tonight as part of that contract with the county that has the TPA report to you, so you could monitor our performance and ask any questions. So tonight, I have a brief presentation to share with all of you on the status of where we have been for the first quarter and a half, I think really is where I am. So, let's see, if this is going to work. Here we go, and we're off. Okay, so, I just wanted to start with the highlights from the 2021 program year. It was a very busy, active, and successful year. I'll start with, on the left, you see, that, that's actually a, the cover of our visitor guide, our official Seneca County visitor guide. We received a New York State Tourism Award for Marketing Excellence back in May of 2021 for our campaign on celebrating the 100th anniversary of the passage of the 19th Amendment coming into the year in 2020. The Director of the State Tourism Office, a man named Ross Levi, commented that it was the second time in five years that Seneca County has received the award, which is a tremendous accomplishment for a county of our size and a TPA of our size. So we are very, very proud of that award. In the middle is, gives you an idea of the amount of resources that we, that has been invested in digital resources. You see a picture of the current website. We had a tremendous, successful year in terms of digital advertising. I will get into what, where we're going this year. It's, it pretty much mimics, to a large degree, what our successes, picks up on where our successes left off in 2021. And then lastly, marketing has been led, over the last year and a half now, by county-specific data. We invested in a research project with, along with some of our partners in the tourism region here in the Finger Lakes, a group called NEAR, which is the foremost data aggregator. Rove Marketing, they're out of Canada, and AirDNA that controls data related to short-term rentals. Bottom line here is that the investments we are making into marketing and promotion are being driven by county-specific, that's a big deal. Seneca County-specific data and analytics that are really at the heart of everything that we're doing, which for years, we relied on other data sources, and primarily data from the region. So it wasn't specific to Seneca County. So this is a, has been a game changer in terms of our performance. So I'll move on. Speaking of that data and those analytics, we have at our fingertips now, as I mentioned, specific data for Seneca County. In 2021, as you see at the very top there, we actually captured over 271,000 mobile smartphones. Cause if your question was, "How do you gather this data?", it's from mobile, mobile research. It's from mobile cellphone data, as people come into our community that have the, the switch turned on their phone that says, "Allow" while using this app, or "Allow Always." Those people are who we've captured here in this, in, over the course of 2021. So, the types of data we're getting is, so we think, first of all, that's a very strong sample size, over 271,000 individual users, very strong sample size for us. So things that we get access to, we have access to right now. Most popular time to visit, probably doesn't surprise anyone here that July and August are the two most, the two busiest times of year. That goes without saying. But, from this research, if you see the March through April on the, on that blue graph on the top, you'll see a, an anomaly. You'll see a spike. And we were really struggling to understand what that spike was, because quite frankly, it was not from the efforts of the TPA. And in our tourism committee, one of the members of our tourism committee is a man named Chris Lijeski, who is from Monizuma. And Chris shared with us that in March of 2021, there was probably the most active flight path for waterfowl in the history. That went right over Seneca County, specifically right over Keuga Lake State Park. And this is proof positive to us of the economic impact of birding in our community. And stay tuned on that, I have some news to share. So anyways, we put together some really compelling campaigns based on this data. The time of year, some of the anomalies, what can we gather into that? Other data that we capture is the average length of stay. You can see 2.3 days here in Seneca County is the average length of stay. The average visitor, this is a very interesting one. The average visitor travels 237 miles to get to Seneca County. That is really positive for our overnight accommodations, particularly those people in the overnight accommodation sector, I should say. Other information that we collect from this research, have collected from this research, is where people are coming from. This chart gives you an idea of where those are. Rochester, Syracuse, Buffalo are the top three markets for us here in Seneca County tourism. Specifically, I would note Syracuse, Buffalo, or Syracuse, New York City, and Philadelphia accounted for the largest increase from 2020 and 2020, into 2021. So you can see on this chart, we can even break it down by zip code of where those visitors are coming from. So, this is extremely helpful and powerful to allow us to target our marketing efforts towards those geographic areas. And then finally, we can also monitor the points of interest. We drew a rather large geofence around the Seneca County border, and then we drew individual geofences around many of our tourism attractions here in Seneca County. So it tells us where people are coming in, what, what their types of interests are. As you can see from that chart, in 2021, the three most popular visitor destinations in Seneca County was Waterloo Premium Outlets, Del Lago Casino, and Sodder's Market and Store. So, armed with this information is how we make decisions at the Chamber TPA in terms of marketing and public, marketing and promotions. So, what were the results in 2021? 70% growth in occupancy tax revenue over 2020, a 20% growth in sales tax revenue. Eighty, almost 88,000 website sessions, which is up significantly from 25,000 in the previous year. Our advertising program alone accounted for 2.3 million impressions. Those are the amount of eyeballs, sets of eyeballs that laid eyes on our advertisements. Over 101,000 engagements, people that actually engaged with that ad through a click-through or an interactive element. Our cost per click, a CPC, which is a measurement of how efficient we are spending money, is there for you. 51 cents on a paid search ad, and 30 cents on paid social. So those are extremely well, well-performing campaigns. Our target was around the 80 cents mark, 80 to 90 cents mark. So you can see, we bested that quite substantially. And more than 20 earned media placements. So for those of you interested in what an earned media placement, this is something, this is a, a promotion that we've been able to successfully place in a major travel public relations. It's called earned media because we don't pay for it necessarily. We don't pay for an ad in these publications. But, the attention and the influence of earned media, if you ask anyone in the advertising industry, or anyone that advertises, they would attest that the impact you get from earned media is far and away more impactful in terms of the attention that it brings and the influence that it brings. So one of those earned media placements, I think I have three here. These are the three most recent that we've acquired in 2022. Starting with the most recent that hit yesterday from Travel and Leisure. This is a link to their site. Travel and Leisure ran this story. It was, what was it? They named the Finger Lakes as one of the best places to go in 2022. And at the bottom of the screen, some of you probably can't see this, but the specific places that were mentioned in this article was the village, town of Seneca Falls, the Seneca and Keuga Lake Wine Seneca and Keighoga Lake wine trails, Finger Lakes Cider House, Sampson State Park, and Finger Lakes Resorts. Tremendous publicity for those properties in a national publication, a nationally renowned publication. The other two, Thrillist and Conde Nast Traveler, those are two earned media efforts that hit in the month of March, which was Women's History Month. Always a very busy time for us because we have obviously the most incredible women's history assets in our backyard, so that makes us a very compelling story in the month of March specifically. But I want to talk about one earned media, the biggest probably placement that we have had in the last few years. I would, I would argue it was the biggest placement that anyone in the Finger Lakes has had over the last few years. It was a placement with CBS that aired back in January of this year, 2022. It was the result of a year-long pitching effort that Seneca County took the lead on on behalf of our regional partnership, tourism partnership. The idea behind this story was how local farmers are reinventing themselves and their businesses despite challenging times. So in other words, to help position agritourism. And we pitched Miranda Cheese from Seneca County and a couple others from neighboring counties, and the result was this coverage. This aired on January 15.
Who shot Alexander Hamilton in that famous duel? All right, let's go to the phones and see who's out there.
Hello, for $10,000, who shot?
Oh, my God!
Excuse me?
Hold on, let me check the book. No! Oh, my God!
I'm sorry, next time.
That classic dairy industry ad campaign encouraged Americans to put milk in the fridge, but consumers' tastes have been changing. Milk consumption is down 42% from what it was a half century ago, from 247 pounds per person in 1975 to just 144 pounds today. And that's put a squeeze on dairy farms. There are about half as many as there were in 2003, a loss of more than 38,000 licensed operations. But those that remain are finding ways to adapt to this changing world. We visited two upstate New York farms with two very different approaches.
They'd all be out here on the pasture grazing in the morning. Maybe not this time of year, but possibly with as warm as it is.
Walk through Tom Murray's old dairy farm, and you sense an emptiness in a space once teeming with life.
So this is where you did it all?
Yeah, this is where we milked our cows. This is where a lot of the herd was kept.
Vacant stalls where 90 Holsteins herded together to deliver their yield.
Do you miss them?
We don't miss losing money. If we could make money, we'd still be doing it.
Losing money forced Murray to shut down milk production in 2019 and sell off his prized heifers, even the descendants of his best, Lucinda.
Well, she set the world's milk production record in 1997, 21 gallons a day.
21 gallons? What's the average?
About 14 is about 100 pounds of milk per day per cow, almost 14 gallons.
Wow!
Yeah. We had good cows, so to make that decision was very personal, but also very needed for economic stability of this property.
Still gets to you.
Oh, yeah. When we're competing against the Walmarts and the Lowes of this world on this scale, we just don't cut it. We just don't have that scale of efficiency.
So this first-generation dairy farmer specialized. He became the big cheese of Miranda Cheese.
Now, this is red pepper fleck.
Mmm.
And the heat will come late. It's not-
Late?
Late.
How late?
Well, to finish.
How hot?
Well, I don't know your tolerance level, but it'll be fine.
Unlike milk, cheese consumption has nearly doubled over the last four decades. New York is already among the nation's top producers and ranks number one in yogurt, cottage cheese, and sour cream production.
Well, we're trying to create a market to make our own cheese and create a destination here in the Finger Lakes, and it just happens to go good with all the craft beverage facilities that are already here.
And he continued his expansion with live music and tasting events. That's one approach.
Okay, so I'll stop it there. That was about a seven-minute piece that ran on CBS Saturday Morning. As I mentioned, back on January 15, it was a Saturday, obviously, Saturday morning. The spot aired locally around 9:30, but it aired first in New York City around 7:30. By 8 o'clock, Tom Murray, Miranda Cheese's online sales were skyrocketing. By later in the day, he couldn't keep up. He said it was the single largest online sales day he has ever had. And it gives you, and not only that, but the, the traffic to our website jumped over that weekend as well. So that gives you an idea of how powerful an earned media coverage is. Everything you saw in that, we coordinated, from taking the crew, getting the crew wrapped up, taking them around. Michelle Miller was the host, she came down, we took her to other sites that she was, when she was here, she ate lunch at Sodder's, for example. So everything about that spot benefited Seneca County from start to finish. Couldn't be more proud of that. Moving on to some of the other advertising and promotions we are currently underway with at the TPA. On the left, you'll see two examples of a paid social ad. These are ads targeted based on those analytics that you saw earlier in terms of visitor profile, areas of interest, geography. The one on the right is an example of a paid search ad. Now, these are the ads based again on our visitor research, but they, what we do is we strategically bid on the placements of these ads. When they're successful, what you see on the screen at the right is what would come up. So if you typed in things to do in the Finger Lakes, for example, you'd get this that comes up. We bid on that, so we're not always successful. We have a budget, that's where that cost per click number that I mentioned earlier comes into play. So those are examples of our paid advertising. Here is an example of some of our social spotlights and digital newsletter. The, the one on the left is highlighting the Three Bears Historical Complex. The one on the right is an example of our digital newsletter that comes out twice a month, highlights something unique, three stories featured in Seneca County. I will tell you on that one in particular, over the last couple of years, based on that digital investment, we've acquired a direct mail opt-in list of tens of thousands of potential visitors who we target these to. So again, just the power of the ability of the Chamber TPA to leverage our assets to get exposure for the county that places could never do on their own. Or I would say they, it's not that they couldn't do it, it's to, I don't know that they would have the amount of money necessary to do some of the items that we are doing. Here's three final advertisement and promotion projects that I wanted to share with you, starting with the digital kiosk. We completely revamped this. That's what we were working on over the last four months, really since the end of 2020. And I wanted to show you this. This, this just went live last week at Del Lago. I'm going to click on this, you can see it's a full-screen touchscreen unit that is featured at Del Lago right now. Let me go back to that. And this gives you an idea of what it is all about. If I can connect, and I can't connect, how about that? Well, go to Del Lago to view this, because it is pretty incredible. We spent hours on this site. There are many, many advancements on this site. It's connected to our local database that powers our website. It's also connected, tied in directly to the state's ILOF New York website, so when things are pushed out, they are pushed out to this and everywhere else. So it's a great advancement for our digital presence. The one on the, the one in the middle is a current example of our, of what our website is, and that has actually a page is, is what's on the screen. It's a page of what you will find on the digital kiosk. We're moving most of the research and development that we've done on that kiosk, we're pushing that out to the website because so much has been invested in that. We think they're really good advancements. And finally, the visitor guide, it has been delayed this year because of COVID, costs have gone up, production, supply issues have resulted in a delay. So this will be available for public consumption on June 11. And I promise, I'm coming down to the end here. Two last, two last screens here. Our upcoming initiatives, we have a tourism summit that our tourism committee is feverishly working on right now. That will happen in the middle of June. It's meant for our tourism partners in the industry to provide them information and how-tos, basically, on how to provide successful mentoring throughout the upcoming summer tourism season. The one in the middle, I talked about the, the birding issue, what, an anomaly we saw in March. So we shared that with the state, we shared that with other people, and part of that, the result of that was the state has put together an I heart, I bird New York, birding trail. Seneca County's assets, many of them were just uploaded within the last couple of weeks. You can go, you can Google that, it's right off the, the, I think it's the DEC website too, that they have that on. Great asset, great resource for our community. And finally, the one on the right is a fair, New York State Fair Display. This was a cooperative marketing project that we offered last year to our tourism industry partners, was wildly successful. We're going to bring it back this year. It's a way to get some of our, our smaller tourism industry partners to have the brochures at the state fair throughout the duration of the fair at very minimal cost to them. The, the TPA picks up a bulk of that, and then they, their outlay is something like $100, which is a pretty reasonable avenue for many of them. And then finally, in terms of upcoming initiatives, the New York State has received a federal EDA grant. The state's share was about $45 million for tourism marketing. We are actively monitoring this because grant funding or a portion of that 45 million will be made available to both DMOs, destination management organizations like ours, but more realistically, probably on a regional approach. But it will also be available to, to tourism, individual tourism partners. And those three areas, outdoor recreation, business travel, and international travel are three areas that the state is, has made priorities. So we are looking to position not only our county TPA promotional and marketing efforts, but also our county to be advantageous when it comes to this funding. Obviously, we have outdoor recreation, business travel, international travel have plummeted like they have around the state. I can attest to something Matt shared with you earlier from MRB. I had three groups alone this week that had 50 or more people, and they were all turned away by the wineries and the craft beverage places that they were looking to go to because they could not, they cannot handle that size crowd. So it is a real thing, and hopefully, money like this, opportunities like this will help our county and our, our businesses be successful. So that is what I have. Any questions?
Any question for Jeff?
Hey Jeff, the kiosk that you have out at Del Lago, if, if a business around the county wanted one of those kiosks to display their wares and this and that, what would those kiosks cost?
So we actually looked into that. It is something that we would love to do, is provide on a, on a more mobile scale, we could, we looked at tablets, equipping our visitor information centers and others that want them with tablets to run that. And so a tablet would cost, you know, anywhere from probably 500 to $1,500 apiece. And then obviously, we would be able, we would be in a position, since we've already invested all the resources into the software to run it, we could very easily do that at no cost. So we actually were, are looking at that. It would probably, it's probably not something in our budget this year because it probably would, we're looking at around $10,000 to equip all of our visitor information centers with that, but that's, that's the cost of something like that. The key here is, it is possible to make that kiosk technology in many more places.
Thank you, Jeff.
So Jeff, what if-
Go ahead, go ahead.
So in terms of the kiosk, like what do you think makes that more attractive? I mean, why, if I'm visiting, why wouldn't I just Google, what the hell do you do in Seneca County? Right? I mean, just, I'm just curious, because I haven't seen the kiosk.
So, so you certainly can, and probably that, that would probably be the most common way that people are, are searching, seeking out tourism establishments. But if they are already in a tourism informational center, that is the, the tool or the resource that would be very beneficial to have them, especially the people that are staffing those, some of which may not know everything that there is to see and do.
Okay.
The one at Del Lago was in the hotel.
Gotcha, gotcha, that makes sense.
Jeff, we got one more question for you.
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry.
My first guess, when I saw the jump in March and April, would be fishermen. Keighoga Lake had probably at least 50 boats a day because the perch are schooled up, getting ready to spawn out by the twin buoys. They all had to buy gas and bait, snacks and beverages, and-
I think that's a very-
... covered with ice fishermen until March, and the ice went out, and there was 50 boats out there every day.
Yeah, I think you're right on that. I think that is another part of what's driving that, that traffic. Like I said, it was, it was an anomaly, and I think that helps explain what that jump is. So what are we doing now? We're actively promoting the birding, the fishing, camping, we're actively promoting the outdoor activities that you could enjoy over that time period.
All the more reason to keep our lake-
I was just going to add into that, yeah. And Jeff, I just want to add for the other supervisors, if, well, thank you, I think this data is absolutely crucial to making an informed decision going forward. And it comes back if, I, I don't think there's any more this year, but if any of you get an opportunity, the, I went to the last two Coffee and Conversations, and they were excellent. They were very, very good in terms of, I mean, especially as a new supervisor, getting a handle on and sharing what's going on, which, which I'm, I'm more convinced that ever, not that, not everyone isn't doing what they know to be best, and, but my impression, and certainly, see, supervisors with more experience can correct me later, but it's still, I'm grasping for cohesive, organized effort of collaboration and cooperation utilizing the amazing resources we have to push the ball forward, right?
Absolutely. I mean, thank you for the comments. It does remind me of two things. Number one, all of that information that was shared in terms of the research, we shared with our tourism partners via email. So if they did not get them, or if they, if you happen to be talking to someone, this information is absolutely available to them. We put the investment in out of the TPA, the occupancy tax fund, so this is information that is freely available to Seneca County tourism business. We will absolutely share and help them understand this information. So that's number one. And number two, if any of the town supervisors would like this type of a presentation in your town, I'm absolutely willing to do that. I think it could only benefit your town legislatures as well to understand some of the efforts that are being done to promote your town, their, their tourism assets and the county tourism assets at, at large.
I'd like that, because we are the home of Miranda Cheese and Three Brothers. I would very much like this, so, yeah.
Supervisor Borsh, you got a question?
Yeah. Jeff, I love the numbers. My question is, I see, I can't remember, 44% between Del Lago and the outlet mall?
In terms of visitation numbers?
We know if they're just getting off the thruway, going there, getting back on, or if they're spreading out through the county, can we break it down more?
The answer is, we can break it down more. The reality is, we can't afford to break it down more. They, they charge more for things like that. So that, that's out there. But I, yeah, we, we drew that, and those geofenced areas around about 40 properties in the county, so that's not every single tourism property was represented there. Out of the ones that we drew geofences, that's the order in, in terms of where they come. But I think we got, for the most part, the largest ones, for sure.
Great, thank you.
Says right in there, don't go south of 336.
Yeah.
Thank you, Jeff.
Eric will charge you for every glass of water.
There are wheeling fees, Paul, yeah?
Yes, thank you.
Literal wheeling fee if you drive over it?
A toll booth on 414.
Everybody's very bold when he's not here.
Oh, no, trust me.
Got to it to get to all the wineries. Got to to get to all the wineries.
Kind of feels like the Wizard of Oz, Mike.
Yeah.
You can leave them off.
Okay, that's all we have for presentations. We have one petitioner tonight, Keoga Nation representative. If you come up to the podium and state your name, please.
Hi, can you hear me?
A little closer.
Is this good? Okay, perfect. Hi, everyone. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Maria Stagliano, and I'm here with my colleague Andrew Ricky. You may recognize my name from some of the local media coverage, as we've been representing the Keoga Nation for more than a year. Tonight, we are here on behalf of the official and legitimate Keoga Nation government for two important reasons. One, to correct the misinformation shared by the self-declared traditionalist group. And two, to find out if and how the Keoga Nation Council can work with Seneca County to build a positive and productive relationship moving forward. At the supervisors' meeting two weeks ago, we certainly heard a lot of misinformation that I'm sure you're very well acquainted with by now. First of all, I'd like to make it very clear, there is no leadership dispute. Keoga citizens have expressed their overwhelming support for the Keoga Nation Council. As you know, and as was noted during the last meeting, native nations interact with federal, state, and local governments on a government-to-government basis. Interestingly, this disgruntled minority faction is simultaneously telling you that you have no right to interfere with their governance while demanding that you do just that. While they have a right to speak here as private citizens who reside within the county, they do not speak for the Keoga Nation, only for themselves. Despite the misinformation and smear campaigns spread by this minority faction, the Keoga Nation Council has been actively working to further the best interests of its citizens. I want to share with you just a few of the Keoga Nation Council's recent efforts to provide for nation members versus what this minority group has done solely to benefit themselves and line their own pockets. The Keoga Nation Council developed and operates a variety of thriving businesses that provide job opportunities for Keoga Nation citizens and the community. They developed a fully functional and operational tribal court and professional police force. They purchased parcels of land for further economic development to restore the Keoga Nation's reservation. They make quarterly financial distributions to Keoga Nation members and provide donations to the local community. They continue to provide affordable housing to Keoga Nation members, as well as healthcare and educational scholarships. Multiple times a year, the Council distributes thousands of meat and vegetable boxes to the nation's citizens across the country from the nation's own farms. And, as a way of connecting members across the country with their traditional roots, the Council invites its citizens to attend an annual return-to homeland event that provides them the opportunity to explore their traditions, culture, land, and people. By contrast, here are just a few ways that the self-declared traditionalists have impacted the Keoga Nation citizens. They have violently seized business and residential properties belonging to the Keoga Nation. They stole more than seven million dollars in sales revenues during their illegal operation of these businesses. They've created a false sense of fear by spreading rumors, including accusing Mr. Haftown of terrorism before this very body and elsewhere. They've stolen more than seven hundred thousand dollars in unpaid rent by squatting in Keoga Nation affordable housing, which also prevents other paying Keoga Nation citizens in need of housing the opportunity to reside in these homes. And they have conducted demonstrations, protests, and other gatherings that have brought on traffic problems and community safety issues, including when they illegally operated these stolen businesses. When one governing body treats non-governmental representatives as equals, when they allow them to speak with authority, when they give them perceived credibility, they aid that group's attempt to usurp power over the legitimate government. It is one thing to allow this group to speak at these meetings, it is another thing to say they represent the Keoga Nation, its interests, or its government. The minority faction's appearance and recognition before this board gives the false impression that these self-declared traditionalists are recognized as legitimate leaders of the Keoga Nation. As was mentioned in the last meeting, Seneca County plays no role in determining the Keoga Nation's government, and therefore should not continue to bolster this faction with the same legitimacy as the Keoga Nation Council. These individuals are simply private citizens, not nation representatives. I know the nation has not had a strong presence at these meetings in the past, and, as a co-equal sovereign, they are under no obligation to do so. That being said, the nation would like to begin sending representatives to these meetings more regularly to provide a voice on behalf of the Keoga Nation's legitimate government, particularly in light of the illegitimate, non-governmental Keoga members who have been attending regularly and frankly, are just here to spread lies. On behalf of the Keoga Nation, we welcome your concerns, your questions, and your ideas. Even if we cannot answer all of them today, we look forward to returning with more information to ensure the legitimate Keoga Nation government is accurately represented. Thank you for your time. Any questions?
Questions from the board? Supervisor Shipley?
Maria, thank you. It appears, though, that you're, through you, the Clint is asking for improved relations with Seneca County. So, let me start there, and you mentioned the Keoga housing. Since 1997, he has purchased seventy-two properties in Seneca County. There are approximately sixty-eight properties in the town of Seneca Falls, and three in the town of Irrie. Now, collectively, these properties owe seven million, five hundred and twenty-six thousand, three hundred and twelve dollars in back taxes, property, school taxes, both, both county and town taxes. By New York State law, Seneca County has to make the towns and the school districts whole. So, if Clint is looking to make, have better relations with Seneca County, have him come in with his checkbook and pay off his back tax debt.
Well, that's definitely something that we are happy to address, and we can look more into it and provide a response. I think it's a little bit of a complicated issue with taxes, though, because the nation is sovereign and it's its own entity, so to ask them to pay for taxes that are, they're not their responsibility, I think is a little bit outside of their scope. But again, that being said, I'm not a tax expert. I will come back with a better answer or provide something in writing.
Well, it's, it's, it's an issue that if the property owners, the people that own the homes, they use the services, don't pay for, it comes on, falls on the backs of the rest of the property owners in Seneca County. And so, if you use the services, if you use the services, you should pay for them. As Supervisor Farrar pointed out to the other group, and you sat here and watched them, there is a house that's owned on Lower Lake Road that owes eight thousand dollars in water alone. Now, he didn't talk about the property taxes on that same house, too, but that's a big number for a small county. So, if, if Clint is looking for better relations, I don't care if you, you don't have to call it taxes, you can call them offset payments, you can call them anything you want, but we have to pay for the services that are used on all properties, the travel, everything that falls under Seneca County.
Well, I'm certainly sympathetic to that situation that you're in, and we will talk to Mr. Haftown, and we will get back to you with more information for that.
We will be all ears, waiting to hear from you.
Supervisor Barnhart?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a few questions, and I would love a little leeway to dig in. I, I know the taxes are central to this board's mission, but, you know, I've only been here for a couple of years, so I'd like to learn. You know, we invited Clint here last year and haven't heard from him, so I hope that you can speak on his behalf and teach me a little bit along the way. I'll start by saying, I appreciated your comment about sort of ignoring minority factions. As the lone Democrat on this board, I can assure you that that probably rung pretty true with my colleagues here, so they might appreciate that. I want to start by asking, are Keoga Nation members U.S. citizens? I can answer it for you if you'd like. They are. So, when they come to this meeting, you know, we're a public body, we open the doors, and they're welcome, whether it's Clint Haftown or Sachem Sam George, they're welcome to speak to us, and, and we should listen to them. The next question I want to ask is, what's Clint's title?
Clint Haftown is the leader of the Keoga Nation, and he is the federal representative for the Keoga Nation.
So, you've encouraged us, I believe, in your statement to the press and, and in general, to stay out of their business, but is he the chief? Is he a president? Is leader the official title?
Leader is the official title.
Okay. I was curious about that. Federal representative was the only title I've ever seen, and I found that kind of ironic that that's the title that we gave him.
Right, there's a lot of that information in the news, but he is also just the leader as well, chosen by his people and through a governance process that in 2016, I think, was both the BIA and the DOI authorized and oversaw the whole process, but it's something that they determine on their own, and they change their governance laws throughout the years as needed and update them. So, that's something that, back in 2016, was already resolved.
I'm unfamiliar with the governance process, just, I'm a student of government, student of public policy. Are you willing to share what the governance processes are for, I mean, I don't know if they elect leaders or appoint leaders, or...
I don't think it's an election. I can send you information on it, we have some of that, and I can also send around a myths versus facts document we created that illustrates a lot of these misconceptions, some of which is from old media, so I can send that, too.
Yeah, I've seen that. I just, you know, you made a point to say that Clint's leadership had the overwhelming support of Keoga Nation members, I think you just said that. And then, I think he also claims he was democratically elected by sixty percent of the...
That was not an election, that was more of a, to gauge the sentiment of adults over the eighteen, over the age of eighteen members, and it was not, yeah, I don't think that was considered an election necessarily.
Still, I mean...
Again, I think it'll be easier to send you a document from, for me to try to explain it.
I know, but we're here to serve the public, so I'm trying to give the public...
Oh, well, we can put it in, I mean, whatever we're allowed to, we'll put in the public record. We're going to put the statement in public record as well.
That is much more consistent with Clint's original comments, where he had said that, you know, the, the Keoga Nation's not subject to Anglo-majority rule, or whatever he had said in, in ninety-seven. So, that's at least consistent, but I am still curious about their process. Can I ask you, does the Keoga Nation recognize the Hodenoshone Confederacy? Last I knew, they were a part of the Hodenoshone Confederacy as one of the nations, but can anybody tell me if they actually recognize?
I think that's a no, we do not.
That's a no. Okay, do you recognize sachems, chiefs, clan mothers?
I believe clan mothers are the ones that make up the, the governing body.
The Hodenoshone Confederacy. The clan mothers and the sachems make up the Hodenoshone Confederacy.
Sorry, I'm looking to the, the legal counsel, in case, in case they have the answer.
If you guys want to answer the questions, but I'm seeing some contradictions there that's making it a little bit hard for many of us to understand, frankly, Clint's legitimacy. And I know that by no means is the United States allowed to tell the Keoga Nation who should be running their nation, but we're neighbors, we're community members, we want to be a part of this, and, and you mentioned that, that there's a path forward, and you're looking for a positive and productive relationship. What's the end? What's, what's the goal? What relationship does the Keoga Nation want to have with Seneca County?
I don't know if the Keoga Nation wants to, I think we want to explore if that's possible.
What kind of ideas? I know where we stand, I mean, we're pretty public, right? We're, we're standing here talking about our taxes, and we have a, what we think is an unsolved legal question...
Right.
...about land purchasing within the land claim, or whether or not anybody here recognizes the land claim. I know what our end game is, I know what my end game is. What's the Keoga Nation's end game? What kind of relationship do, would they like to explore? Where do they want to get? Do they want to settle the issues of taxes? I mean, I, I just, I really don't understand. We invited Clint here, and we still have not received that, that answer.
I understand the inconvenience of the taxes and the properties, but also, if you look at the history of the inconveniences for these Native Americans, it's a much bigger problem.
I'm right there with you, I'll be in lockstep. If that's the subject that we're talking about, I'll walk with you. But in terms of forging a relationship with the county...
Right.
Where do you want to go? Do we want to sit down at a negotiating table? Do we want to settle the issue? Do we, I mean, do we want to negotiate the issue, or is the Keoga Nation's stance, period, Seneca County will never see a dollar of any taxes they've ever charged?
I think that's certainly something we can resolve one way or another, so we'll give you an answer. Not today, I, I do not have the authority to answer that today.
Fair enough. I, I, I think that's the, the end of my question. I, I mean, I'll just say that, you know, I was hoping that with you being here, sort of staking your claim to being able to speak for Clint, that you would have been able to give us some answers. I didn't ask you anything that doesn't have two or three hundred years' worth of history. You should have been able to give this board a little bit more than you did. We're still pretty clueless on where to go, and I don't speak for everybody here, but the invitation to meet with Clint, I assume, still stands from this board from July 2021, and I think that if you want to see some progress, we should probably talk and, and not delay.
Would you be interested in a meeting that's not public, but just something that's...
I'll defer to the Chair of the Indian Affairs Committee. If he's so gracious to include the minority leader, I would appreciate that, but I'll, I'll defer to the Chair and to, to the Chairman of the Board on how the county wants to address that. I can state my personal interest that I'm certainly interested in settling this. I've spent a lot of time talking to state leaders, national leaders, BIA members, of how this goes, and we have a blueprint. We've seen it in Oneida County and Madison County. The question is, does the Keoga Nation want to solve the issue? I believe you're here from a crisis management firm. I mean, let me ask you this, and you can answer this, because I'm asking you, what's the crisis?
Smear campaigns from the other side, from Sam George and his people, not to try to call anyone out by name, but the people who have been coming here and saying things like Clint is a terrorist. When I first joined and learned about this, I read a lot of media that was really negative, and was shocked when I found out all the facts and what was being reported, like there's, like a daycare, a longhouse that had been destroyed, which is absolutely not true. So, just, really, just helping navigate that, I think, is first and foremost what our role is, but we're not just a crisis firm, we're a strategic communications firm. I'm coming here on behalf to be able to speak on behalf of Clint and the Keoga Nation Council. I don't have a re-answer today, but I am here as a first step in this process.
Sure. I, I did do a little research on Levick, and I suppose I was both not surprised and a little concerned to see the clients that you've represented in the past, and I'm sure you've heard this every single meeting that you go to, but to share with my board members, we're talking about the Catholic Church during the sex abuse scandal, the condo collapse from the Florida condo collapse recently, the Gulf of Mexico oil spill, I'm a native Houstonian, that was particularly devastating. The most recent I saw was Michael Cohen, you represented Michael Cohen from Donald Trump issues?
I, I don't work on every account.
I'm just trying to needle my colleagues.
I can also tell you that our public list of our clients is very different than our full confidential list, but...
I'm sure it is, sure it is. Well, thank you for trying to answer my questions, I look forward to more correspondence.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Supervisor Farrar?
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, just, first of all, thank you for coming tonight. Unfortunately, two weeks ago, things, timing wasn't great, but thank you for your patience. Just to make something clear for the record, the property that I mentioned two weeks ago is not owned by the Keoga Nation, okay? It's owned by Keoga Enterprise, and it's a separate entity from the Keoga Nation. All Keoga Nation properties are paid in full for utilities, I'm not saying anything else, paid in full for utilities. You know, I spent most of my life as a history teacher, and the one thing I realize when you talk to young people is, you tell them, if you keep looking in the past, it's going to be very hard to move into the future. And if Mr. Haftown is serious, and I'm not a hundred percent sure that he's serious of actually sitting down with the governing board, I can personally tell you that I have reached out as a supervisor of Seneca Falls probably at least ten times, okay, with no success. I have some inroads, and I'm hoping that it's going directly to him, but, you know, we need to figure out how we can coexist in this community, okay? And that's what a lot of people in this community have not realized, that the Keoga Nation will be here forever, and the sooner Seneca County realizes how we can coexist, the better off the nation will be, the better off the citizens of, of Seneca County will be. The Keoga Nation has just purchased another very large tract of land in Seneca Falls. The Keoga Nation is, you know, I'm not saying this officially, this is unofficially, this is my own... is my own insights, my own gut feeling. I think the Kuga Nation will be opening a Type 2 casino on the corner of 89 and Garden Street, the structure that's being built right now. So it's, they're a major force, economic force, in this county. And the sooner we can come to some agreements on how we can help the county with our financial burden, the better off we'll be, because I think it's in the best interest of both parties. But thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Supervisor Jeff Trow?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I think echoing Mike's point, with also great respect for Kyle's research and such, my thought is, again, as a new supervisor, I'm struck by, so in my day job, for 22 years, my job has been to mediate, facilitate, negotiate between parties that don't always have the same exact interest. And one thing over those 20-plus years I have found is that, A, you can't go ahead unless you're actually communicating in an open, honest manner. You just can't, right? There may be success, or there may be movement, but it's really false. The other thing that I have noted or learned over those two decades is that, once we communicate honestly, openly, and look at each other's interests and respect them, that in fact, what's often found is that the two parties really have common interest. And to that point, I think it's fortuitous that you came tonight because you got to see two presentations in terms of tourism and agri-tourism and the resources that this county has. And I can't help but think, setting aside the leadership part, right, because that's not, I mean, I taught history, that's not my thing. I don't know enough to judge or to get involved in that at this point. But what I see, as Mike said, looking to the future, is, my God, think of the opportunities we could have in this county if somehow whoever it was with, we were partners instead of, and contributing our fair share for service, all those things. I just think there's an incredible amount of opportunity to work together. How do we do that? You know, I don't know. But I think, to Kyle's point, has to start with open, honest communication. And maybe that's a private meeting at first, it's such, I don't, you know, whatever it takes, is what I say. So, because this, and again, I'm sorry, you know, as Mike said, this can't continue in this forever, because we're going to lose services, right? And we're going to have to suck up those taxes that aren't being, I mean, that's not good for anybody, because you certainly need some of those, as Mike put, you certainly need those services as well. And we can't be healthy unless we, let me put it this way, we can be healthier working together than we cannot. I don't know what that looks like, but that's mine.
Well, I'm glad to hear that there's some interest on this board of, you know, some sort of meeting and opportunity to collaborate and see what the path forward could look like.
Thank you. Any other questions?
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. At this time, like to open the floor for open privilege. Is there any member of the public who would like to speak tonight?
I think we covered all the topics.
I think so. All right.
Sure, Bob? I think we got some left.
I don't see anybody. All right. Approval of the meeting minutes?
So move.
Motion. Supervisor Barnhart made the motion, seconded by Supervisor Don Trow. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Reports of standing committees. Supervisor Partey?
The Mental Health Services Committee met on April 26. We have two resolutions in front of the board tonight. The first is to approve the appointment of Maria Gelati and Joseph Lorenzetti to the Seneca County Community Services Board. The second is to approve the contract amendment with Terry Haskins, FNP. And that is all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Supervisor Barnhart?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Planning, Development, Agriculture, and Tourism met two weeks ago. We have a number of issues in front of the board tonight. One, to introduce a local law to reestablish the membership and duties of the Seneca County Planning Board. We have another issue, snowmobile trail grant Phase 1, 2, and 3 applications. We're opening those for the 2022-2023 season. We'll look at a memorandum of understanding with the town and the village of Lodi for the purchase and administration of two mobile radar speed sign trailers. We'll look at an application to and acceptance of a Federal Aviation Administration grant for design and bidding of the North Apron Reconstruction Project at the Finger Lakes Regional Airport. We have an RFP for housing needs assessment from the Department of Planning and Community Development. And finally, there will be a piece of new business to support the master plan update at Finger Lakes Regional Airport and extend the runway. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Supervisor Borse?
Mr. Chairman, just point of information. Could I just ask, a newbie, how do you determine the order? Because I'm looking at my packet, and the first thing that's there is Supervisor Rattles. So what...
Just going around the horn as far as going over with the...
Have a catch afterwards, too, you know? Real resolutions come up later.
Like some secret sign I didn't...
No. I'm going down the list.
No, that's fine. And the other question is, and just, maybe you can tell me later, but we present committee reports, then we come back and vote on those things. I don't, why don't we do it at the same, why? It seems like a waste of time. Or I might...
I'm elected the wrong chair.
All right.
You answered that. I've been doing these committee reports for four years now.
All right. Moving ahead.
Thank you.
Yes. Supervisor Borse?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Public Health Services Committee met April 26. We have three items on the agenda. Number one, contract with New York State Department of Health for the tobacco enforcement grant amount to be $27,294 for the period of April 1, 2022, through March 30th, 20, 31st, 2023. Number two, approve the contract with New York State Department of Health for the water enhancement grant for the period of April 1, 2022, through March 31st, 2023, in the amount of $92,849. And number three, approve the contract with New York State Department of Health for the Healthy Neighborhoods Preventative Health Cornerstones Grant, period April 1, 2022, through March 31st, 2023, in the amount of $125,432. And that's it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Supervisor Reinhardt?
Thank you. There'll be three items coming out of public safety. The first one is going to be approval of a statewide interoperability communications targeted grant. We'll also be approving the local law, social host law, and also purchase of door and camera upgrades at the law enforcement center.
Thank you. Supervisor Farrar?
I'll give my report when I do my resolutions, all right?
They're going to start a new trend.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Personnel Committee have a couple of things that do not need board approval. We've authorized refilling several vacant positions, and we've also allowed or voted to create and fill new positions in public health. We have a couple of resolutions tonight, reclassifying positions in the sheriff office and also the highway department, and we also have a resolution authorizing above state rate for a couple of positions. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you. Supervisor Hayes?
I have nothing for the board tonight. The only thing I do have from our committee meeting was that we are going to be meeting on the May 17th at the town of Romulus Town Hall for our committee meeting for water and sewer, as opposed to having it during our normal committee meeting, because it's of the stuff we have to cover is very lengthy, and we'll bring the notes back at our normal meeting to update the board.
Thank you.
Dave, that's at 6 o'clock, right?
That's correct. 6 o'clock. Sorry. Yep.
Supervisor Shipley?
Thank you, Acting Chairman Enzle. The Indian Affairs Committee, and we've certainly been deluged with a lot of that lately. First, during our committee meetings of April 26, the county attorney, Eppman, reported the federal Northern District Court was asked by the St. Regis Mohawk Tribe to void the New York State purchase of some 2,000 acres of land known as the Hogansburg Triangle in St. Lawrence and Franklin Counties from the Mohawk Indians in 1824. The judge ruled in a summary judgment on Monday, 3:14, that the land purchase violated the Non-Intercourse Act of 1790. This stuff happened 200 fricking years ago, because the federal government never gave their official approval of this purchase, which surely will be the subject of future negotiations and continued litigation. Next, the board listened to a presentation from Chief Sam George on the Kuga Indian Heritage, Culture, and Decision Process. Dylan Seneca from the Kuga Turtle Clan also spoke, claiming that the BIA, Bureau of Indian Affairs, is wrong in their recognition of Kuga Nation federal representative, claiming the selection was improper. Chief George gave us his contact information and asked that any future communications be sent there. Supervisor Farrar asked who owned 2133 Lower Lake Road property, where a Kuga member is selling cannabis from a shed without a permit, and the property has an $8,000 unpaid water bill. Dylan Seneca said he would ask the owner to cooperate, so...
Nothing yet.
Yeah, you haven't got your check yet.
What a chucker, huh?
Also, due to time considerations, Maria Stalagnato, an attorney from Barclay Damon Tower Attorneys for Kuga Enterprise Haftown, who asked to address the Indian Affairs Committee, was told to return to the May meeting, which we just heard. And thank you for all the input you gave her. You know, I really didn't want to blast the messenger, but we needed to send the message that the Kuga, the 72 properties that they own, most of which in Seneca Falls, is reaching $8 million now, and it's becoming a burden on Seneca County taxpayers. Thank you.
And Kyle, thank you for that research. I didn't realize she was a crisis manager. That was very helpful information to know.
These guys have been telling me I don't know what I've been talking about for two and a half years, so, you know, first shot to prove something, right?
Okay.
Thanks.
Well, she felt like she was in a crisis.
She did well. She great. I mean, it would have been nice to get more answers, but it was great.
Supervisor Brownell?
Yes. Technical College Committee met on April 26. Committee has one resolution for tonight, to approve an agreement with Seneca Falls to share technical services and PC support specialists. The town of Seneca Falls funds the salary. That's all I have.
Thank you. Supervisor Jeffrey Trout?
Government Ops met. As you know, we had a presentation by County Historian Walter Gabel. There is a handout attached to your board packet in regards to the historic marker project. Also, I will be bringing a resolution to dispose of 26 outdated voting machines. We did clarify with help from a number of folks here that the only cost to us is to ship it at a cost of $1,400. That's it. We spent $300,000 when we bought them. It's just $1,400 to ship them there and get rid of them. And that is the, I talked with both commissioners and others, and that is the cheapest resolution to get rid of them and have them destroyed properly. That's it. Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Supervisor Don Trow?
The only thing I have, other than the resolutions to follow on tonight's agenda, I will be asking for Rule 29 for ARPA funds for a sewer corridor plan and development. That has a lot to do with the MRB presentation we were giving at the beginning of the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Cronewether, do you have some? You're not on my list. You've been taken off.
Surprised.
Been removed.
The Environmental Committee doesn't have any resolutions tonight, but the presentation from MRB and Hunt Engineers is working on a sewer line for Kuga Lake are the most exciting things that can happen from the environmental standpoint for Seneca County, is to have sewer lines on Kuga Lake and Seneca Lake. It'll be a great improvement. Looking forward to it.
I can see the twinkle in your eye, Paul.
That's it.
Thank you. The Human Services Committee met on April 26 in accordance with the county's travel policy. There was one resolution tonight for an employee to travel to a conference in Pennsylvania. And then, okay. Supervisor Reynolds?
Thank you, Chairman Enzle. Our finance assessment and insurance met last week, or a couple weeks ago. And after committee meetings on the 26th, we had a special meeting to adopt a resolution authorizing the authorization of insurance issuance of refunding bonds for the county. The notice will appear in the official papers, Finger Lakes Times, on the May 14th and 15th. With some housekeeping resolution to amend the 2022 budget for the highway snow removal and new business. We're, hi, tonight, we'll talk about a home rule law to waive firemen and AMOS workers, volunteers from taxes, partial taxes payments. And that's it.
Thank you. Reports of any special committees?
It ain't going to take long.
Don Trow?
IDA met last Thursday. There's a new opening available on the board, and they're currently in search of more property for an industrial development park, somewhere from 90 to 100 acres is what they're looking for. Other than that, there's a bunch of whole mess, real boring resolutions that just transferred stuff that we've already been doing now for a year. So, there you go.
All right. Thank you. Anybody else? All right. Chairman's remarks. The only thing that I wanted to mention was the recent incident that happened at the ribbon cutting at the Love's new travel plaza out there. I just wanted to recognize the agencies that were swift in a part of that horrific situation out there, which could have been much worse, not that it wasn't bad enough, but the agencies that were involved that day, law enforcement, was Seneca County Sheriff's Office, New York State Police, Seneca Falls Police, Waterloo Police, Ontario Wayne County Sheriff's Offices. They brought in the Bomb Dogs, Monroe County, the Bomb Squad, FBI, fire departments, Clyde Fire Department, Seneca Falls Fire Department, Waterloo Fire Department, Junius Fire Department, Fayette Fire Department, Seneca County Fire Coroner's Office, EMS was North Seneca Ambulance, Life Net of New York, Geneva General Hospital. Other agencies were Seneca County 911, Seneca County Protective Services, Seneca County District, and then the Seneca County District Attorney, and then the Seneca County Code Enforcement. I just think those, they deserve credit all the time for what they do. And that's all I have for that.
My guess, mental health was also involved.
They're not on the list, but I'm assuming...
If they weren't, they should be.
But, yeah, those departments deserve a lot of credit. That's all. County manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Subject to and pending the board's approval of the bid award for the next phase of work at the Sampson Veterans Memorial Cemetery, we will have a pre-construction meeting on site next week with the goal to complete this last phase of improvements as we prepare to transfer ownership and operation of the Veterans Memorial Cemetery to the state of New York. It is our goal and expectation that that work will be completed, and we will be prepared to transition and convey title to the state sometime on or about October 1st. So we'll keep you all posted. The other thing I just want to let you know, and under the chapter of, you know, time continues to fly by, before the next full board meeting, county department heads and I will be kicking off at the staff level the development of the 2023 Seneca County budget. So we will be getting going on that in the coming weeks, and we'll be sure to keep you all informed as we do the work again at the staff level and prepare to be able to file a tentative budget with you all, not too far down the road, as the clock continues to tick. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. County attorney?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. We have a couple of local laws that'll be on the agenda this evening, and just wanted to remind everyone that these are both the social host law, to bring it up to date with the, I'll say, the legalization of certain uses of... the, I'll say, the legalization of certain uses of cannabis, and also for the planning board, which is important to keep their operations going. Also, we'll have some discussion during executive session concerning two litigation matters that are important to the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, Communications, please.
Communications number 48 through 60 have been approved, have been received and filed. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's get on to resolutions here. Financial, finance assessment, assessment and insurance. Supervisor Reynolds.
Board of Supervisors authorized amendments to the 2022 Sonica County Budget. Support.
Second.
Yep. Motion by Boris, seconded by Park...
I don't like what you said.
Reynolds, sorry. Yes. Thank you, Margaret. Motion by Supervisor Reynolds, seconded by Supervisor Boris. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
I got another one. Board of Supervisors authorizes the council to settle civil action. Support.
Motion by Supervisor Reynolds, supported by Don Trout. Any discussion?
Nice job, Dave.
No discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Human Services, number 17, authorize for one Sonica County employee to travel out of state for training to Lancaster, Pennsylvania.
Support.
Second.
I'm in favor.
Reinhardt, Supervisor Reinhardt?
You can hold it.
Supervisor Hayes, thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. Number 18, Supervisor Don Trout.
Award construction contract for site enhancement at the Sampson Veterans Memorial Cemetery.
Support.
Seconded by Supervisor Shipley. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Public Works, Supervisor Don Trout.
Supervisors commit 5% local match for Marshall Road Bridge, New York Project.
Support.
Supported by many. Any discussion?
Reinhardt, Hayes, I'm in.
No discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Contract with John Snyder Architects for new fascia and side porch at Sonica Connections Drop-In Center.
Jeff Trout, yep. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Public Works, Supervisor Don Trout.
Supervisors approve purchase of three new lawnmowers for the Facilities Department.
Support.
Seconded by Supervisor Hayes. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Public Works, Supervisor Don Trout, number 22.
Contract with Kelly Bros for LLC for installation of security locks at Senate County office buildings.
Support.
Support by Supervisor Reinhardt. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Public Works, number 23, Supervisor Don Trout.
2,000 new Holland mower removed from surplus equipment transferred to Finger Lakes Regional Airport.
Support.
Supported by Supervisor Hayes. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number 24, Government Operations, Supervisor Jeffrey Trout.
Motion to, sorry. Motion to declare the Dominion machine, voting machine surplus and authorize the board to ship them back to Dominion Voting for proper disposal.
Support.
Supervisor Reinhardt, seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Technology number 25, Supervisor Brownell.
Authorizing extension of the interminable agreement for shared services with Sonica Falls for the PC support and informational technology services through 2022.
Support.
Supported by Supervisor Boris. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number 26, Supervisor Farrar.
Board of Supervisors approves our direct personnel officer to issue RFP for deferred compensation plan administrators.
Support.
Supervisor Reinhardt, seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Personnel, number 27, Supervisor Farrar.
Board of Supervisors appoint members to the Deferred Compensation Committee effective immediately.
Support.
Supervisor Brownell, seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Personnel, number 18, Supervisor Farrar.
Board of Supervisors approves the creation and filling of one full-time public health sanitarian.
Support.
Couldn't hear Supervisor Barnhart, thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Personnel, number 29, Supervisor Farrar again.
Board of Supervisors approves the reclassification of one full-time addictions counselor to mental health clinical therapist at the Sheriff's Department effective immediately.
Support.
Support by Barnhart. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Personnel, number 30, Supervisor Farrar.
Board of Supervisors approves the reclassification of one full-time clerk to senior clerk in Sheriff's Department effective immediately.
Support.
Seconded by Supervisor Brownell. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Personnel, number 31, Supervisor Farrar.
Board of Supervisors approves the reclassification of one full-time civil clerk position to senior civil clerk in the Sheriff's Department effective immediately.
Support.
Supervisor Hayes. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Personnel, number 32, Supervisor Farrar.
I'd like to make a motion that you get paid by the number of resolutions that you have to do. You get a second for that? No, huh?
No.
All right. Board of Supervisors approves the reclassification of one full-time typist to senior typist in the Sheriff's Department effective immediately.
Support.
Seconded by Supervisor Reinhardt. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Personnel, number 33, Supervisor Farrar.
Board of Supervisors approves the reclassification of two full-time vacant motor equipment operators, excuse me, motor equipment operator light positions to laborers effective immediately.
Supervisor Boris, seconded. Any discussion?
I'd just like to know, supervisors, take a look at what that annual salary is.
Whoa.
Keep that in mind when we go into executive session.
Duly noted. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Personnel, 34, Supervisor Farrar.
Board of Supervisors authorizes hiring above start rate for seasonal labor positions effective immediately.
Support.
Supervisor Hayes, seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Personnel, 35, Supervisor Farrar.
Board of Supervisors authorize hiring above state rate for psychiatric nurse position in the Mental Health Department effective immediately.
Support.
Supervisor Partee. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Public Safety, number 36, Supervisor Reinhardt.
Board of Supervisors approves applying for the 2022 statewide interoperable communications targeted grant.
Support.
Supervisor Farrar.
I just wanted to go on the record, make sure nobody knew I was here.
Thank you.
You don't get, you don't get a smaller bonus for the support.
No.
Any other discussion? All those, all those for this motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Public Safety, 37, Supervisor Reinhardt.
Thank you. A resolution to introduce local law C of the year 2022 and provide for a public hearing, a local law prohibiting the consumption of alcoholic beverages, marijuana, and/or illegal drugs by minors on private premises in Sonica County, short title, the Sonica County Social Host Law.
Supporting. Anybody supporting?
Support.
Supervisor Farrar. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Barnhart.
Thank you. I'll start by issuing apologies to our county attorney, Mr. Etman, for writing the law that I'm about to disparage. I find this local law to be unnecessary. I think that it contradicts state penal law and the recent legislation passed by the state to legalize cannabis. Cannabis is now treated similarly to tobacco. Both have age requirements for sales of 21 years old, but unlike alcohol, if you're in possession of cannabis or tobacco as an underage person, there is no punishment. With alcohol, there is. So, let's leave this local law as it is, that applies to alcohol, which has been effective and a worthy cause for oversight. I think this law implements illogical fines and punishments for activities that are currently legal. These punishments also stack in this local law that's proposed, the third offense for which is $1,000 fine and up to a year in jail, akin to a misdemeanor. Again, this is for essentially cannabis possession, which is now legalized. Sorry, let me get back to this. So, this law, as proposed, essentially provides an over/under 21-year-old policy by which someone over 21 can be arrested or cited for giving or sharing cannabis with somebody under 21. This is already outlined in the New York penal law. I researched it today. It's number 222.50 and 222.55. That's the whole section on cannabis. 222.50 just talks about possession of cannabis. And actually, if somebody is 21 years of age or over, if they share, give, or even sell cannabis with somebody under 21, there is no punishment because there's a legal defense that if they're within three years of each other, there is no punishment. So, if a 21-year-old's sitting on a porch using cannabis with an 18-year-old, that is illegal activity covered by New York State explicitly in the penal law. So, I think this is overreach. I think it's unnecessary, nothing more than a tool to fight against New York residents with their right to use cannabis. Let's leave it as is, leave it regulated like tobacco as it was written. And if I can bring it full circle, when this initial law was initially passed by this board back in 2013, it was used for the first time a couple of months later to enforce it against a Kiuga Nation member on a Kiuga Nation property. So, I just thought that was an interesting little layer of how that law was used. And as a matter of fact, I don't, I think I can say it, but the person who was cited for it has spoken in front of this board recently. So, pretty interesting turn of events there. So, I just ask for your support in either sending this back to committee or voting it down, but, you know, let's honor the state legislation and not get ourselves into trouble by contradicting it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other discussion?
Was there a motion there?
Make a motion.
I have not, but I was hoping that there'd be some discussion and...
Hit your show.
Okay, I'll move to send this back to committee.
Second.
Where? Supervisor Farrar, seconded. The motion to send it back to committee.
All right. Going back to committee.
I second it.
Yep.
What do you need? A second?
Any...
We got a board on that motion.
Do you want to do a roll call vote?
Call the question.
Well, you got to, you got to vote on the motion to send it back to committee.
Yeah.
All right. Vote on the motion to send it back to committee.
First and second. Voice vote.
Voice, all right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion, go back to committee.
Thank you, friends.
All right, Public Safety, number 38, Supervisor Reinhardt.
Board of Supervisors approves door and camera upgrades at the Law Enforcement Center and amend 2022 Sonica County Budget.
Support.
Seconded by Supervisor Boris. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Public Health Services, number 39, Supervisor Boris.
Contract with the New York State Department of Health for the Tobacco Enforcement Grant.
Support.
Seconded by Supervisor Barnhart. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Public Health Services, number 40, Supervisor Boris.
Contract with the New York State Department of Health for the Water Enhancement Grant.
Support.
Seconded by Supervisor Barnhart. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Public Health Services, number 41, Supervisor Boris.
Contract with the New York State Department of Health for the Healthy Neighborhoods Preventative Health Cornerstones Grant and amend the 2020 budget.
Support.
Seconded by Supervisor Hayes. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Planning Development Ag and Tourism, number 42, Supervisor Barnhart.
A resolution to introduce local law B of the year 2022, establishment, authority, and duties of the Sonica County Planning Board, and to repeal and replace local law number 3 of 2010 and provide for public hearing.
Support.
Seconded by Supervisor Boris. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Kyle, can you just, what are the, can you highlight the changes?
Yeah, this is what Jill Henry from the Planning Department talked about a couple of months ago, essentially changing the board from one representative from each town with a couple of alternates now to, and I'll, do you want me to read this to you?
Well, we just, I just, I remember Jill coming, and I remember actually asking questions about it. I just wanted to make sure I was recalling correctly.
The quick and dirty is it eliminates the town-by-town requirement and allows them to have a little bit more flexibility in appointing members to the board.
All right, thank you.
Jill, anything I missed in there?
The term limit.
Oh, that's what I thought.
Any more alternates to the board as well?
That's what I want. Okay, thank you, yep.
Any other questions?
Nope, thank you.
You all set? All right, good. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Planning Development Ag and Tourism, number, that's 43, right?
Correct.
Supervisor Barnhart.
Thank you, sir. Authorized snowmobile trail grant applications and signing agreements with Twin Lakes Snowmobile Association and Seneca Sleders Snowmobile Association.
Support.
Supervisor Reinhardt, seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number 44, Supervisor Barnhart.
Authorized memorandum of understanding between the Town of Lodi, Village of Lodi, and Sonica County.
Support.
Seconded by Supervisor Boris. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number 45, Supervisor Barnhart.
Application to and acceptance of Federal Aviation Administration grant for design and bidding of North Apron Reconstruction Project at Finger Lakes Regional Airport.
Support.
Seconded by Supervisor Shipley. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number 46, Supervisor Barnhart.
Request proposals for consulting services for Sonica County Housing Needs Assessment.
Support.
Seconded by Supervisor Boris. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number 47 Mental Health Supervisor Partee.
Supervisors approve Seneca County Community Services Board appointment of Maria Gelati and Joseph Lorenzetti.
Support.
Seconded by Supervisor Kyle Barnhart. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number 48 Supervisor Partee.
Supervisors approve amendment to contract with Terry Haskins, FNP.
Support.
Seconded by Supervisor Barnhart. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries.
Got everything, right?
Any unfinished business? Any new business?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Barnhart?
Well, first I'd like to propose, Don, help me with the wording here, that.
We want to enact Rule 29 to cover any business to follow underneath Rule 29 consideration for the evening.
I'm gonna repeat, I'd like to propose to enact Rule 29 to cover any business that Rule 29 all.
Second.
Cover for the evening. I even did the Don Trout, sort of, you know.
Motion by Supervisor Barnhart, seconded by Supervisor Jeff Trout. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Piece of new business, Mr. Chairman. I move to enter onto the floor Supervisor Support Master Plan Update at Finger Lakes Regional Airport and 1,000-foot extension of runway.
Support.
Support.
Any discussion? Supervisor Shipley, seconded.
Yeah, thank you very much, Kyle, for bringing this forward. This is way overdue and I wish to thank Mitro and Jill Henry for your work on this to get this moving. We should have probably done this years ago, but now's as good a time as any. Let's get moving.
Thank you. Supervisor Farrar, did you have something? Nope.
So will this, will.
Supervisor Jeff Trout.
So will this resolution, will it help, will it give them the authority to continue to study it, to them come to?
Well, we have to, we have to amend our master plan first.
All right, okay.
The runway extension was in the master plan years ago. The FAA removed it because we weren't moving forward with it.
Oh, okay.
So the first thing we have to do is add it to the master plan again. And then we gotta go out and do studies, get designs, get funding for it so we can move forward.
Okay.
So it's gonna take a little bit of time, but we gotta start the process.
Yeah, I, yeah. Good, thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 50B. Can you get a motion for 50?
You want me to do the motion? It's through finance, so I guess I can do it.
Yes, please Supervisor Reynolds.
A resolution approving the home rule request for passage of a bill number S-8910 and A-9986 introducing New York State legislation to amend the real property tax law in relation to providing tax exemptions on real property owned by members of volunteer fire companies or volunteer ambulance services in certain counties.
Support.
Support.
Supervisor Barnhart, seconded. Any discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to thank Senator Helming and Assemblyman Gallahan and Pominzano for doing the home rule legislation to bring this forward.
Thank you.